Ron, if it's okay with you, let's get underway on 24 North Main.
Okay.
Okay, so welcome everybody. This is the Sherburne zoning board of appeals. It's the night of December 3rd. We are being recorded. If you were expecting commentary on vote counts or massive fraud, that's another meeting. First up in our batting order tonight is a special permit renewal for 24 North Main Street. This is the project right between the fire station and Rose Automotive, former location of the Sherburne Day Spa. I think we granted a permit in January of 2017 for a continued similar use under a different name. And Tom, I think you represented the petitioner at that time, and now you're back again. So tell us your tale, please.
Excuse me?
Tell us your tale, please, sir.
Yes, we'd like to reopen our, the Sherburne Health and Beauty Center. We'll be providing the same services with the exception of massage. We've made no physical changes to the, to the premise. We just want to reapply and go into business again as a spa.
Okay, and the reason why it didn't go ahead in 2017 was it just?
No, we did go ahead. This is a renewal.
Got it. Okay, great, wonderful. Okay. All right. Is there anyone else here to comment on the renewal application? Mr. Fitch, welcome.
Thank you. Sorry. I got it now, obviously.
Is this a renewal or is this a new?
Renewal.
Renewal.
Renewal. The application has a new check off on the other side.
Because the old one expired?
Oh, is that it?
Okay.
I thought that's what it was.
Let's treat it as a new application then, Tom. Is that okay with you?
Fine, sir. That's how you like to proceed.
That's the way you put it in?
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone here to comment on the new application? Going once, going twice. Okay, thank you. Comments from the board members and Jonathan, now because we started without you, Ron and I will just handle this one. Okay, Ron, any?
Well, it would just confirm that the conditions of the previous approvals are acceptable to the applicant at this time.
Yes.
Okay, and I'd suggest that we add that the operation also comply with all state and local COVID-19 regulations as in effect from time to time.
Absolutely. That's our plan.
Okay. In that case, Ron, I'd like to make a motion, if you'll hear me, that we grant the application as written and that it be on all the terms and conditions of the prior permit, which was, I think, January 26, 2017, with the additional condition that the operation comply with all state and local COVID-19 requirements as they may be in effect from time to time. That's my motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, for the discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, I?
Expiration date?
How long can we get? Is this usually a five year? Okay. In five-year terms, same as last time. Wasn't the last one for five, Jeanie?
Yeah.
Okay, for a five-year term. Okay, all in favor, I?
I.
I oppose, none. The race two to nothing. Mr. Fitzgibbon, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
On to, as they say in wrestling, the main event. The combined hearings on 31 Hunting Lane and 41 North Main Street project. Whoops, we've got some more people in the waiting room. Let's let them in. Okay. There used to be a TV show on called Lost, and I found it very confusing to follow. And at the beginning of each episode, they would say, previously on Lost, and they would recap some things. And I found that recap as confusing as the show was itself. So previously on the ZBA, I'm going to try to recap where we are and how we got here. And I'm going to try to be less confusing than the TV show Lost was. If you recall, last time, we opened the hearing primarily for the purpose of hearing the issue of site control. And we heard from council for the developer, Paul Haverty, we heard from council for the town, Mike Terry, and several other people on that subject. And let me, let me put up a plan to sort of refresh everybody to what the stakes are. Okay. Someone in town, Marion Nurtur, I think it was you, had sent along this plan, which is a, I've added some new markings on it, but it's essentially the 2014 plan showing the 61B parcels. And they were shown in sort of a, the plan is on the town website. You can see it much better there. But essentially, the reddish pink line going around was the area subject to 61B. Last time, I talked a little bit about this sort of L-shaped parcel here, parcel 3B. That is the sort of the Keystone parcel, and we call it the Keystone parcel because both the 31 Hunting Lane project and the 41 North Main project needed for water. Without this parcel, there's no water for either one of them. And the 41 North Main parcel needs this area for its sewer line because this actually, it's using the same wastewater treatment system over here on 31. So both projects need this parcel. We asked for and got written commentary after the hearing last time from a number of parties on the issue of site control and what the board could do, what the board should do. I thank everybody for submitting the materials in writing, on time, polite, professional, legal. Nobody held a press conference in a landscaped parking lot. I'm very grateful for that. And Mr. Haverty's letter essentially said, that's on the website too, that's from November 25th, and he said, "The board should not rule on the issue of site control. The issue of site control is really solely for the authorizing agency, in this case, Mass Housing." And as Haverty says, he thinks they gave them site control, ruled on site control. He then also said that if the board wished to challenge the applicant's site control, the only way to do that was to go back to mass housing under 760 CMR 56.041C. And if the board did challenge that, we would have the burden of proving a quote "substantial change", close quote, in the facts since the determination was made by the authorizing agency. And and I think he also said that the town 61B rights, by the way, aren't triggered anyway. And he said all a bit much better than that, but that's a short summary. Town Council, Mike Terry, also sent a memo, also on, also on the town website. And he said, well, actually, the town's rights have been triggered. There's a case, an SJC case, the Scott, I think Scott versus Sudbury case, under similar facts, as he says, under which the town 61B rights are triggered. So in Mr. Terry's judgment, the select board's rights are in play. He also thought that the facts have changed substantially because of the actions of the select board, and that those actions constitute substantial change for purposes of revisiting site control. And to describe those facts, Mr. Terry laid out what I believe to be simply the case, which is that the select board has not exercised a right to buy yet. They have started the process by commissioning an appraisal. The appraisal has not yet come back in. What happens after that is not known at this point. The select board could decide to exercise. They could assign to a third party, that third party could exercise, or the rights could lapse without, without being exercised, depending on the pricing or other things. We also got a very thoughtful letter from a number of the Butters who hired Craig Mills. He, like town council, thought that the facts have changed in a substantial way, and he laid out why he thought the town's 61B rights are in play. So having said that, I guess my question to this group is, we did not hear anyone else on the issue of site control. And if anyone else wishes to be heard on the issue of site control, now is a great time to speak up. You don't have to have sent in a letter before. Just has to be polite and professional. So anybody wish to be heard on this topic? Then, okay, while people are thinking about that, Lynn Sweet says the wells are not in the area outlined in yellow. But Lynn, whether I got the mapping exactly right, the wells are clearly in an area subject to 61B. Is that not correct?
That is not correct.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, maybe I should address that.
Okay.
The wells are not located on the parcel that is subject to chapter 61B. The only thing that is proposed with regard to that eight-acre parcel is for underground lines for water and sewer to be run under the parcel.
Okay.
And that's one of the points that we make in our argument is that with regard to that 8-acre parcel, nothing has happened and nothing is proposed to ever happen that is inconsistent with the use of that property for recreational purposes under chapter 61B. This is going to be an underground easement. It won't affect the use of their property.
Right, and you and town council will have it out over the definitions in 61B of what, what is a recreational use, which I think 61B says are exclusive. But you're right, when that issue was fought out, that's fair enough. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Lynn and Paul. Craig Mills?
Oh, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Craig Mills, 39 Hunting Lane. I just wanted to clarify one point as well. The Butters have not hired me as their counsel. I am in a butter. In fact, the Butters have hired Kathleen O'Donnell, who is on the call with us tonight.
My apologies. I was confused by the fact that you are a good, good and very able lawyer. You're not wearing that hat. Now you're wearing your butter hat. You're a fly.
Correct.
Fair enough. Other commentary on the issue of site control from anyone? And Paul and Mike and Craig, to the extent I mischaracterized your letters, now's your chance to say where I got it all wrong. But be polite, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, Mr. Terry.
Mike Terry, Attorney Associate, Town Council. Yeah, I think you pretty much got it right. So just to clarify, our recommendation is that, you know, unless and until we get through this process and make a decision, get the appraisal, and hand over a written notice to the applicant that we are, that the town is exercising its rights, the site control issue, although it's in play, is not ripe for determination. So our recommendation is, at this point, that you go forward with the hearing process. Obviously, we'll advise you as the, as the process continues, when we have wide a notice to the applicant, we'll certainly let you know. But until that trigger is pulled, so to speak, I don't, I don't think you can, can yet send this back to Mass Housing for determination.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Anyone else with a commentary on the site control issue?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing that I would point out is that ultimately, determining the issue of site control is not something within the jurisdiction of the Board of Appeals. It's also not within the jurisdiction of Mass Housing as the subsidizing agency. The only entity that has any jurisdiction to make this determination is a court of competent jurisdiction. If we do wind up getting to the point where the town decides that it is going to issue a notice that it is exercising a right of first refusal or option to purchase, and the applicant is disagreeing that it's applicable, you know, we'll go down that road as necessary at that time. But we're not asking the board to make any determinations with regard to that issue because it simply doesn't have the authority to do so. I very much appreciate town council acknowledging that the time is not yet ripe for the board to refer this to Mass Housing as the subsidizing agency. I think that is the correct determination. The only thing that the town has done so far is really initiate a process of conducting an appraisal. There is a very specific statutory process that is required in order for a town to exercise a right of first refusal or an option to purchase, and the town hasn't done that. In fact, in the notice from the select boards meeting, they specifically continued that hearing to hold additional meetings regarding whether or not to exercise the right of first refusal. So they're acknowledging that at this stage, they have done nothing that has changed any positions with regard to that option to purchase. So again, there has not been any sort of substantial change that has occurred at this point in time.
And I appreciate all of that argument, but I would remind you that in your filing, you did request that we make a finding on site control. It's finding number two in, for both of the projects. So, you know, I think, I think the ripe decision was probably going to carry the day, but I think we want to hear from the rest of the board members. Anybody else with a additional commentary? Ms. O'Donnell, representing the Butters?
Thank you very much, Mr. Novak. I just would ask the board how it expects the applicant to address the condition in the site eligibility letter that states that the applicant's supposed to be addressing the question of 61B. That's not a, 61B is not a situation that the zoning board can waive. It's a tax statute, not a, you know, local regulation. It sort of leads one to think that this condition in the site eligibility letter needs to be clarified by Mass Housing. As I said, I just don't see how you can possibly address this. This is beyond your jurisdiction.
Great, thank you for that. Other thoughts, other commentary? All right, had I heard somebody? Okay. Board members, Mr. Stefan, Mr. Fitch. I think the decision for us is, do we try to reject the application for failure to have site control? That was sort of on the table last time. Do we try to send this back now to Mass Housing saying, wait a second, there's been a substantial change in the facts, in our view, and we think you want to rule on this Mass Housing? Or do we, or do we defer on the theory that it's, it's not yet right? As suggested by town council? What are your, what are your senses?
Well, my own sense is that this issue is not right for our, our decision.
I too, I have to say, I'm curious, given Ms. O'Donnell's the applicant intends to do with respect to its obligation to comply with the requirements of general laws, chapter 61B, as referred to in the Mass Housing April 30, 2020 letter.
Right, okay, fair enough. Mr. Stefan?
I'm afraid I have to defer to both of you who have much more understanding of this particular subject than I do.
Fair enough. As we rely on you whenever it's, whenever it's important enough, something's going to fall down or not. I'm very much with Mr. Fitch on this. I, with respect to the argument from council from both sides that we don't have any jurisdiction to rule on this, I, I, I'm not persuaded by that at all. I think there are handcuffs and limits on what we as a board could do. Clearly, under the regulations, this, the authorizing agency, Mass Housing, is probably going to have the final word, and we'd have to go to them, and we'd have to have a burden of proof against us. And the facts are going to change dramatically in the next couple of months. That appraisal is going to come in, and the court of selectmen or somebody else are either going to exercise or they don't. And if they exercise, that's going to be a big change in facts. If they don't exercise, well, that itself would be a big change in facts, but in the way the developer wants it to be, which is that the right of first refusal will no longer exist. So I think we can defer this issue. I think we can ask, as the developer asked us to, and as the authorizing agency directed us to, how they plan to handle the 61B issue, but I don't think it has to be the first or only issue. So I have a motion that I'd make to suggest that we reserve our rights on this, move ahead with the hearing, and visit the substantial change issue down the road. That's, that's my suggestion to the two of you.
I would second that motion. I do second that motion.
All right, let me be more formal in how I make it. I, I move that the zoning board of appeals make no finding at this time on the issue of site control or a substantial change, or whether there's been a substantial change in the site control facts. The board expressly reserving its rights to make such findings in the future. And two, second part of my motion is that we open, open the hearing on the merits and move ahead with the discussion of the project. That's my motion.
I second your motion.
Mr. Stefan, any commentary?
No comments.
Okay, move and seconded. All in favor, I?
I. I.
Opposed? None? Okay, motion carries. And now move to the merits of the project. Okay. So last time, Lynn, I think you, you got through your basic pitch, project summary. I know that since last time, you filed various plans. Would you, do you wish to update us on changes in the plans and further developments in the, in the description of the project?
Sure, I'm going to ask Michael Malinowski, who is our project engineer from Allen and Major, to give a quick overview of what he submitted. And then I'm hoping that we can move the discussion forward to securing peer reviews for traffic and stormwater management. Just make sure Michael's still on.
Yeah, I'm here. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Malinowski. I'm with Allen and Major Associates. We are the civil engineers for the project. As Mr. Novak had indicated, we have submitted some additional information relative to the two projects, both at 41 North Main Street and 31 Hunting Lane. As part of the process, we have submitted a updated grading and drainage plan for each project, including a complete and comprehensive stormwater management report, including all appropriate hydraulic calculations for the stormwater systems for both projects. We have also provided updated landscaping stamped by a registered landscape architect from our firm for both projects as well.
Okay, great. And I believe those were the ones that you got in a week or so back, at least, if not longer, and they're now up on the town website, right, Jeanie? Okay, great. So anybody can look at them. All right. Lynn, perhaps we should move to the issue of peer review. Gino, Carlucci, are you out there?
I don't see him.
Okay. I thought he had made some, Jeanie, help me out. I thought he had made some progress.
Yes, he has sent out some RFQs. He is, he was not, he didn't think he got them back in time for tonight's meeting. But he shouldn't have them back. Let me see if I can find his text.
And Lynn, was he coordinating with you on that so that you knew who he was talking with and on what subjects?
No, he said the responses are due Monday.
Yeah.
So we talked about data, Jim Vernon, I know he sent one to them. So he just hadn't gotten responses back.
Okay.
Well, we'd be happy to have Gary put a good faith deposit into an account at the town. And when the peer reviews come in, you could delegate that responsibility to Gino to choose and engage them. And we just want to, you know, look at the scope. We typically handle traffic first. It's, it's the less, I know it's complicated, but it's, it's the less complicated to go through. The stormwater management, landscaping, and engineering is, is, is a bigger bite. So sometimes, you know, in a month or five weeks between a meeting, it's easier to get traffic done, and you may need a couple of months to get stormwater management done. So we're anxious to move forward at a pace that you're comfortable with.
Well, I think we are comfortable. Certainly, board members tell me if you disagree, moving ahead at a pace that, that makes sense from a peer review standpoint. If traffic can be started now and finished sooner, it's one of the puzzle parts, and there's no reason not to do that. I'm looking at my fellow board members to see if they agree, but.
Well, I think, I think, looking at the submission, that there's more substantial information in the traffic section than the other engineering disciplines.
Right, right. So would that mean that the traffic peer review would therefore be easier because there's a lot of data on the table?
Well, I think, you know, I just haven't seen much in the way of stormwater, stormwater management or any of the other civil disciplines. I don't think there's enough information to begin the peer review. So the only, the only one I, seems to me, that has, you know, substantial amount of data and information is basically the traffic.
With all due respect, the information that Michael delivered last week, the manual was very extensive so that that submission should be enough to also have the stormwater management and engineering reviewed. We didn't get, we didn't give everybody full copies of them, and I'll let Michael jump in because I think they're like 300, 400 pages. But I do think that the online version has all of the documentation and backup in it.
Okay, maybe Michael could break it up into pieces so it could be put on the town website. You know, there are ways to make files smaller, and then, then for people who can't or aren't comfortable going to the online version, they will have something that is in, in the public domain.
Yeah, this is Michael from Allen and Major. We had sent links over to Gene, Jeanie, that had an electronic copy of the complete submission. As Lynn had indicated, the stormwater management report with all of the backup data and the calculations is a couple hundred pages long. It is in one complete PDF. So if, I believe the town may actually have a link on their website. So if folks wanted to download and review it, that they could at their leisure, it was just difficult to print multiple copies for each individual board member at that point.
Right, and I don't think we're asking for that, Jonathan. I certainly don't suggest it, and Ron, I don't think you would do either. I just, I just want any interested member of the public to be able to find it relatively easily if they wish to and go through it because that, that's our job.
Yeah.
Jeanie, are you comfortable that the traffic and stormwater management materials are in a format that you can get them accessible through the town website so people can see them?
I'm looking at them on the website now, and it's, the drainage report is up. Landscape grading. Is the stormwater included? Uh, landscape grading. Is the stormwater included in the drainage?
Yes, it is.
It's all up, you can open it. It's it's big, but it's, you can open it, all two hundred and twenty-four pages.
Great. Okay, that's a great outcome. Um, what about engineering on like your, your, your well system? Uh, is that engineered, uh, Mike? Is that something where people can hear review yet or is it? What's the status of that one?
Uh, we don't have that one yet. Um, we have a, um, there's, we have another group of engineers that are on our team. That will be handling the permitting through the state for the well. Um, at this point, it's, they have not been fully engaged. To start that process. But that is forthcoming. So the the work for the wells is is one of those things that it's, it's a little bit farther down the sort of path of the review.
Okay, um, and and what about uh your wastewater treatment plant? What about that?
A similar aspect as well, sir.
Okay, um, so uh, let me try to summarize that as they're not yet ready for prime time. We can't peer review them because they haven't been submitted yet and you're still working out the details of how those two work.
That's correct.
Okay, fine. Um, obviously, uh, if if you have ever worked in this town before. Um, and whether or not you have the issue of water and sewer are of extreme fascination to us. Uh, for for very good reasons, because we don't have any public sewer or or public. Okay, um. So Lynn, if I'm hearing you correctly, uh, on the peer review side, you think um Gino could get going on traffic and maybe stormwater at this point? Um, but that we really can't do anybody yet on uh, uh wastewater, uh, excuse me, wastewater or or drinking water.
I'm correct, and I'm not sure, um, and I and I need to connect with my team offline on this, but I'm not sure. Because um, the um. The wells and the septic treatment, uh wastewater treatment facility, those are state permits. So typically, those matters are reviewed by the state after the local permitting is done. So I'm not sure how much jurisdiction the ZBA has over those matters. Um, but I I can leave it up to my other team members to talk about that a little bit more. But my my experience in working on other forty Bs is that the, those matters are um handled by DEP. And DEP is the um decision maker and it typically happens um father and cross.
Okay, that. Chairman. Go ahead, Paul.
So for this proposal, different from other ones that have been before this board previously. The applicant is is proposing a groundwater discharge permit system for the wastewater. And is proposing a public water supply for the water. So each of those, the permitting authority is not a local permitting authority. It's actually through the DEP. So we're not asking this board to grant us any local permits with regards to those issues. I I don't necessarily think that it means that the board can't ask for information with regard to that. And can't give some sort of a cursory review, but it's it's a different type of a review than what was done. Um, say for the fields of Sherborne, in which we were asking this board to implement the local board of health. Rules and regulations with regards to water and wastewater.
Um, I I actually think you had, you both have it backwards, which is if there's a local regulation out there that you're not complying with. Uh, you need to come to us, the ZBA, and ask us to waive it or overrule it. You can't.
And what I'm saying, Mr. Chairman, is there are no local rules and regulations with relief, would that relate to public water supplies? Or groundwater discharge permits?
You you may find our local board of health and conscom have different views and and I will caution you on the wisdom of saying. You have no right to know about this because I I think that will probably uh not, not help the case. Um, uh, I think the the forty B laws are pretty clear and we don't have town council on, we can check it. Simply saying, uh, you don't, you don't, you don't get to look into this because you've got no jurisdiction because of state permits being issued. Is not my understanding of the way the statute works.
And and Mr. Chairman, again, that, I think that there's a little bit of a misunderstanding here. When we're talking about a a permit, you know, under the Wetlands Protection Act. Um, and the town has a local wetlands bylaw. Um, the Board of Appeals is acting as the permit granting authority under the local wetlands bylaw.
Right.
So so that is certainly applicable, even though there is a state permitting process involved. But when you're talking about a public water supply, or when you're talking about a groundwater discharge permit. There is no local permitting process relating to those. If it was a a single well, or if it was a septic system under title five. There are local permitting processes associated with those approvals. But in this instance, the 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 Board of Health would not have, we we would not be filing an application for approval. With the Board of Health for either one of those approvals, because those are not something that are approved locally, even under a state permitting scheme. But again, as I said, that doesn't mean that we won't provide the board any information. We're not taking the position. That the the board is entitled to any information with regards to it. But again, the board is not the permit granting authority for these issues. That's the only point on.
Well, to the extent that the only permits you need are the state permits, you're right. We don't issue them. But we need to know enough to know that none of the local groundwater protection bylaw, conscon offset, board of health, rules and regulations. Uh, are implicated by what you're doing and to do that, we need to know what you're doing. Um, so I I I would urge you to uh go back and and consult within your team as to what you think is 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 the wise approach. In terms of how much information you give us, you know, you don't have it today. It's not designed. We get that. Um, and and that might take some time and I know that uh, Michael Malinowski and his team can't just pull it out of their pocket on two minutes' notice. But uh, simply saying to to the board, don't worry, that's not your problem, is probably uh. Well, I I I've already told you how it, I think it's gonna work out for tactics. So uh, we 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 would urge you to be as forthcoming as soon as you can as to how those systems work. Because they are uh essential to the the project.
We we will certainly, once, once we get through traffic and stormwater management, we will make our engineers available. To talk about how the systems work. Um, I'm not, and and, you know, we'll go as far as we can as to where we are in the process. To try and inform the board as best we can. But I thi- I think we got a few months to go through to to kind of get to that point.
Right, right. We, nobody was expecting to reach a final decision on this project one way or another tonight. Um, okay.
I was, I was hoping by year end, we could just kinda, you know, no?
Depending what year you pick.
Wishful thinking.
Yeah, but you have to pick a year. Um, okay, and 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 I do not think this will take the end of twenty twenty-one either. Uh, but I think before the end of twenty twenty is um duly optimistic. Um, okay, uh, anyone else from the public have anything to say about the project? Its design, the materials that have been on, um, because now, now we are in full open session. The hearing has been opened. People who wanna say, wait, there's not room to turn around the fire clock or wait, this doesn't work well. Um, you can certainly begin those comments. It's not the last night for it, but please feel free to speak up. Question from somebody in the chat. When are you proposing carry out the traffic survey? Um, this is from Joe Sager, everyone, but I believe it's directed to you, Lynn. When are you proposing to carry out the traffic survey? How can you carry out a traffic survey under circumstances given majority of people working from home? Um, and I I think you might have responded to that last time, Lynn, but would you please repeat it?
Sure, I'll I'll do my best re-der interpretation from Van Ass as best I can. So um, our traffic engineer has studied this area extensively over the years. And I believe what they did is they used current information from COVID and information that they had from pre-COVID. And there are standards that they follow so that the the research has has been done. And he will um present that information and that information is available for your peer reviewer to check as well.
Okay, thank you. Um. Marian.
I, is this discussion on traffic, uh, referring to traffic of both of these projects? Both forty-one North Main and the Hunting Run project?
Yeah, yes, that's correct. And Lynn, uh, tell me if I've got it wrong, but I believe we are running the uh, uh, review of these projects. In parallel because they are uh effectively conjoined twins. They they, they need each other.
We appreciate your willingness to review them at the same time. We think it'll, it'll save everyone um some time as well. Uh, and um, just to kind of reiterate what I said, um, Mass DOT does set up standards. That the, our traffic um, uh consultant used on this.
All right, go ahead.
Right, uh, we have seen, uh, now, um, it, speaking for the planning board. We have seen the traffic report on your PDF document. It is extensive. It's quite detailed. And we understand that it uses numbers, pre-COVID numbers, and so uh, that's fine. Uh, one thing that struck us on planning board, though, is that the uh, the one intersection. On uh, the forty-one North Main project to North Main Street, that is the most crucial one for the project. Uh, was not included in the traffic survey. And that is the uh intersection of Powder House Lane with North Main. Which even as it stands now, uh, with with only that little shopping district being uh served. Is really non-functional. And so we noted in the uh, and and with the forty-one North Main project. As it's described, all of the traffic from those apartments on forty-one North Main will be funneled into Powder House Lane. To somehow make it out through the kindness of strangers onto North Main. Because uh, the traffic study uh simply, you know, set a a stop sign at that intersection. Is there and it's adequate. Well, we all know that it's not adequate and certainly won't be adequate. When this uh development is built. So uh, I can just give you a preview of the planning board comments that we haven't yet formally submitted. But that's definitely something that will come up.
Okay, Ginny, please um, please note to uh Gino that that should be considered in the traffic peer reviewer. That 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 ex-subject matter expert will either uh agree with the applicant, disagree with the applicant, or have their own thoughts and it's a live issue. Thank you. Ron? Peggy Homer, were you trying to say something? All right, does anyone else wish to be heard on any other issue related to these projects at this time? It is not a speak now or forever hold your peace. You can think of it a month from now because this, this Lynn and I both forecast. I don't think we're gonna be done with this project uh in the, in the very near future, just because they've, they've got some very important designs still to do. Gina, I don't see anybody.
Me neither.
Okay, um, board members, I think I'd entertain a a continued hearing date. Lynn, what do you think is practical?
Um, I just wanna make sure, you know, before we do that, you do take some sort of an action. If 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 it's okay for me to say that, you know, voting, you know, to delegate the um, peer review um choices to Gino. And acknowledging that we're gonna be um depositing, you know, good faith deposit. Um, and as far as a next hearing date, I think that we probably should look. At the first week in January. What do you think?
Board members, what makes, what makes sense to you? I'm trying to, there you go, I've got you both on screen at the same time.
I just, I just assume that after the, you know, the week of the twenty-fifth, um, sorry, the week of the. Um, you know, after the twenty-third, it just gets kind of funky. Um, so I'd rather give everyone a time for the peer review to do a peer review and Jack to respond so that it's a really. Um. Uh, robust meeting, informed meeting on all parts.
Right, exactly. Um. Okay.
And we don't have to worry about driving in the snow, right?
We'll see. All right, so board members, Lynn is trying to suggest something in the week which begins January fifth. Excuse me, January four.
Fourth, right.
Uh, fourth, fourth through uh, fourth through eighth. We've been trying to go on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. January seventh, be Thursday? Jonathan?
Yes, uh, that's fine. I actually have a vacation that was scheduled to begin on the seventh. That we decided to cancel. My flight is showing up on the seventh, but we're not going.
So so your reticence to agree to the seventh is is just is uh psychological as opposed to a real conflict?
I know, I'm being cold.
All right. All right, let me uh make a motion then, uh, that uh, the board agreed to delegate the initial peer review negotiations. For uh traffic and stormwater to the town planner, Gino Carlucci. And that he be further authorized to negotiate with the developer for a deposit. Uh, so that the, the, for a security deposit we put down so that those people could be paid. Um, and that we continue the hearing to, until the night of uh, January seventh, twenty twenty-one, seven PM. That's my motion.
I second the motion.
Further discussion, lively debate, accusations of gross fraud and misconduct. No? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, I? Posed none? Okay, motion carries. Um, unless there is other bit, well, Mr. Haverty, go ahead.
I was just saying, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, all right, um, unless there's other business, I think we might move to adjourn. Uh, I think it's a very difficult period for everyone uh in our country and it's gonna get more difficult. So I ask that everyone stay safe and stay well. We'll see you in January. Move to, move to adjourn.
Get out of here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.